This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the Alpine City Council Meeting of August 16th, 2021. Call the order, please.
Councilwoman Huss here.
Mayor Porton Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Mitchell.
Here.
Councilman Noah.
Here.
And Mayor Walagora.
Here.
Let's rise for the pledge.
Are they going to listen to the law? United States of America, truly public, which is. One nation, one nation. Here is all liberty and justice.
All right, let's entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
So.
Second.
Councilwoman Huss.
Yes.
Mayor Porton Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Noah.
Yes.
And Mayor Walagora.
Thank you. Modifications to said agenda? We got this. Approval of the minutes for regular enclosed sessions of August 2nd, 2021. Any issues, changes? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address council. This is the only time during council meeting you're allowed to address council. If you'd like to do so live, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records, and then I will entertain anybody in the virtual meeting.
Tony Dawson, U.S. Police official. For 487 Woodlawn Drive, Escoto. This is our U.S. Police Inspector, Steve Vaughn.
Steve.
Welcome.
Just want to introduce myself and thank you for the privilege of being able to serve in this new position, and I look forward to all the things I have to learn in serving in this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony and Steve. There.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, I'm Steve Fletcher, 322 State. And I'd like to talk to you tonight for just a minute, actually five minutes, about you sailing in Alpine. You know, we just finished up our best year ever. We had 160 user weeks in the river with kids in littler boats, in Grand Lake, and 160 hours or 160 weeks of training in the Inland, in the harbor. We have been struggling for years in Alpine, not having a place. We had a place, but what we have is we have some dominated dock space, and we have two trailers that are 18 feet long. And in those trailers goes everything, sails, anchors, buoys, et cetera. And in winter, like right now, it's a little bit of a challenge because we would like to keep all these boats inside because some of them date back in the 60s. So they aren't new, but they do go. And I'll say they do go because for the second consecutive North American Championship, our kids won. And so that's pretty good. This is simply the harbor as it is today. And this red mark should be moved back up here towards Big Stinky and up against the fence line. And that would be where the building is. So it would be, here's the street, here's the harbor, here's the sewer plant, and it's just pushed right up here. We have, what we're suggesting is doing just a frame building. There's not much insulation in it. We've got bathrooms and stuff, and so we don't need that. We have, we need space, and this building would give us space. And we're told with a, what I call a horseback estimate by a local contractor who is good enough to gin up these pictures for us, that this building costs less than $300,000 altogether. Well, that's quite a bit for a group that only charges $100, about $100 a week for training. So we're going to need a grant sometime. And since you own the property, I'm here tonight to let you know that we'd like to grab about 5,200 square feet of that to put under this building. And the interior of the building is primarily, in the wintertime, is primarily just storage. We have garage doors, as you saw in the other building. We would store stuff behind, not surprisingly, behind the garage doors. And then in the summer, when this stuff's gone, we have room down at the end for a small office because we need an office for two instructors. All our instructors, by the way, are Level 1 U.S. Sailing trained instructors, except for me, I'm a Level 2. So anyhow, we're talking about a relatively simple building getting expanded. And we are part of experienced grant writers who would be willing to, we look for donations for every darkling there is, and would be willing to donate their time to write us a grant. We have that lined up, too. We went to the harbor meeting the other night, and I believe we're included in the harbor master plan. I'll be going to see service clubs to let them know with a little more, a little more depth because of the shortness of time tonight, what we're doing and how we're doing. We've got a lot of kids. We started with six kids. We had, as I say, 160 in the river. I had 20 for eight weeks in boats. And as I say, the poop's in the pudding. We get the, we get the kids out of the river. The couple of them is 11. So this one died one night this, this year, said to me, the 11-year-old, she's not this tall. And he says to me, "Mr. Fletcher, I've got a drive." He was going to be in a boat with me. I said, "I'm a little circumspect about that." And I said, "Well, why is that?" He said, "I can't reach the spinacero pole." So in any case, those are the kids we're dealing with. That, incidentally, is an absolutely dynamite young sailor, and I believe he will be a North American champion, too, as it comes. So in any case, that's it. I just wanted to let you know, we have designs on a piece of property down at the harbor. We have, we're progressing with plans. We, we've been in this business for, I guess, 21 years now. That would do it. You've seen our boats in the river and whatnot. You probably haven't noticed this throughout the day. We're teaching four nights a week at the bay, and we're teaching, I guess, five days a week during the program, either at Grand Lake or in the river. We have enough interest at Grand Lake that there's no less suggestion. We're going to have to expand up there. So we don't talk about expansion very much in Alpine, but this thing's expanding. And so what we'd like is a permanent home. We think we can get a grant, or at least we will try like heck to do it. We're not asking you for money. We have that taken care of. We'll either get the grant, we have some people who will chip in, and if there's a match, they will handle that. So it's pretty unusual, not asking the council for money. But nonetheless, we got something, you got something we want, and that's location. And so I'm just here representing the kids, and that's, I can answer questions if you've got them. But then I won't say within that time.
Yeah, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
And as luck would have it, the harbor master is here as well. Don't you hear the presentation? You've been working with Shannon, our harbor master.
Yeah, Shannon's even convinced that I'm sort of halfway straightforward on what I'm telling you. So, well, that's pretty good. Not everyone, not everybody says that. So anyway, that's it. Yeah, we've been working with Shannon because what the heck? You own the property, she manages it. So yes, we have worked with Shannon, and we'll work with any other parties that have a, you know, we've got tangential people in the community who just give us things. Like our trailers were discounted by a local merchant. We, we have some tools, multi-purpose tools that we give the kids. They're given to us by a local implement deal. And I'm saying, yeah, we don't have any money. So, yeah, they're given to us. Okay, so that's, that's the kind of thing.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Ashley Wilma, 225 South First Street. I wanted to formally introduce myself to Mayor Walagora, a member of the city council. And yes, I am running for city council, officially on the ballot for the voter election. I'm a nearly lifelong resident of Alpine, though I can't say that. My family didn't move here in the 70s. My grandfather chose Alpine. Both my parents moved here from Detroit, the city of Detroit. My grandfather chose Alpine, and that kind of started a motif in my family. My dad lived here for two years before he fell in love with my mom. Five years later, moved here and started our family. He chose Alpine. My grandfather lived here for 50 years with my grandma until his passing this summer. Chose Alpine and moved our whole family there. I had idyllic childhood memories of the library fair and Fourth of July wreaths, and wanted to live here much of my life until I was a teenager. I had my empty time, and some of you knew me at that time. It was one of my monsters at that time. And I had a question at that time, saying, "What can Alpine do for me?" So I attended my primary school and college career ACC, moved away and earned a degree at Central Michigan. And through my experiences in other parts of the country, traveling and earning other graduate degrees, I realized I was asking the wrong question. It wasn't about what Alpine could do for me, it was about what I could do for Alpine. Contemplation of some graduate degrees in psychology and education, I chose Alpine, too. I chose to move back here nine years ago now. I work in education at the Mount Ramsey Educational Service District, and I've been in leadership position there for my fifth year. I work at a systems level, so a big part of my role is change implementation, working with really challenging situations, negotiations, contracts, conflict, resolution, mediation, a lot of the things that probably many of you deal with on a day-to-day basis. I bring 16 years of experience in psychology and education and just finished another degree in leadership. So I bring expertise in training along with a passion that everyone that works for the city and in a service industry brings, the passion of loving your city. I wanted to throw my hat in the ring after serving at many local nonprofit boards, and I still sit on four of them in the city because I am passionate about Alpine and being the change I watch for see. So I choose Alpine every day, and I wake up saying, "What can I do for Alpine?" Changing that angsty version eventually and being the adult, actually seeing what Alpine can offer, but also what I can offer it. So I look forward to getting to know each of you, getting to know all of our citizens in Alpine, and to earn my seed hopefully amongst each of you in the fall. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
I'm Brian Peterson, 1102 Ford Avenue, Alpine, Michigan. I'm somebody nobody in town all at once, a state athlete, ironically. But have you heard of the reason? I'll done it to support her. I have a passion for boating. I've had a boat in the harbor since I moved here three years ago. And I've got to know Rich's harbor master definitely has been a great asset in making me passionate about boating. As they move forward in the harbor, I do agree, we have beautiful harbors north of us and south of us. Alpine is missing the mark, so we do need some change. What Mr. Fletcher just said, totally. My boys, the two of the kids in that class, loved it. Piggybacking on that, I think if we're going to build that building, we should build it with some boat storage. We're coming into the winter, and there's a lot of boaters here. Maybe one of them, where are we going to take our boats? Shuttlers up in Mackinac, intending to be offering indoor storage for $1,700. That is not beyond, I'm going to say. And how are we going to start tackling keeping boaters here? With Rich leaving, I'll be honest, he was the reason I kept a slip here and not had a press deal. So let's, I'm new to kind of this, like what the harbor is and how to impact it. So this is me, like, just kind of starting that and saying, like, I'm passionate about the marina, the harbor and in that area. How can I be a help of it and with ideas and bring awareness to getting boaters into our harbor? But the great loop, we couldn't go through Canada this year. We got a ton of boaters, a ton of loopers coming into Alpine, which are not going to be here next year if they open up Canada. How can we hold on to that revenue and attract boaters to come that nine to 11 miles interval? I think it's awesome. I've met a ton of cool people this year that wouldn't normally come here, and I know that because they go. So that's my two cents, and I'd like to be impactful in making our marina great as the ones north and south of us and keep my boat here and want to be a steward for Alpine and Alpine's. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Brian. And just on that note, real quick, is there another charrette meeting, M E D C, that we could maybe announce?
There's not a charrette, but we will be talking more about the marina master plan. So all of that same process, there will be a lot of changes coming in the next few years. We do have the harbor advisory committee that meets monthly, and we meet on the first Thursday at 4:30 typically during the conference. And so that's where we'll discuss ideas, and we would love to have you.
Thank you very much.
And Brian.
Mark Hunter, 614. You'll be selecting a city council member not too long from now. So I have some comments on that. One weak point in that kind of selection, yes, an election comes up, is that when a board does that, the candidate they select, they bring advantage in the upcoming election. From my point of view, ideally, you would select someone who's not going to run for reelection, run for election, so that the voters have a wide-open field of candidates. Every time there's an election, it's a choice of approach, how things are done, and also a, an idea of what are the issues that people are most interested in. Each of you are elected at different times, and times change. People look for different, different methods, different ideas, different issues. And so, you know, each of you are in the past, as far as your selections go, and hopefully you keep up to date with things. But that, to me, would be the ideal. The question I would like to ask of candidates is their political affiliation, since this is a nonpartisan board. And to get a good idea of if they are truly nonpartisan or if they have a strong viewpoint, politically, one direction or the other. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tracy Shady. I came up here just to tell you a little bit about myself. I have eight kids who were born and raised in this community. They attend Besser School. I have a background in leadership. I was elected the representative for the FLN for Alpine, Shvoigan, Roger City, Chriskill, and other counties for Michigan. I have coached three-on-three tournaments, softball, soccer, you name it, I was in it. And I have served on the Besser PTO while working a full-time job and raising my kids. I have a lot invested in this community, and it means a lot to me to be able to stand here and speak to you. I want to make sure that my kids grow up in a loving community, and that's part of my goal. I want to make sure that when I walk somewhere that maybe Traverse City, I'm from Alpine. I love it there. We have a lot of things to offer for our kids, and they are our future. I have a lot invested, and it's them that I'm running for. So I'm hoping that if I get elected, that I will be able to get to know you guys. And I've done a lot of research. I know this is a well-oiled machine. I've watched you guys relentlessly, and I can't imagine, you know, doing a better job than what you guys have done. So I'm really hoping that I can jump in full feet and continue the work that you guys have done because it's amazing. And this came from a different meeting and didn't go as planned. There was a lot going on there, and I am glad that I can come to this meeting and feel welcomed and loved and respected. And that's what Alpine is about, and I want to keep it that way. So I look forward to listening and watching more and hoping I can learn a few things because I'm young. So I look forward to it. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Adrian MacArthur, 3391 Salina Road, team. Here tonight, you're later on this evening, I see on the agenda 14C, I believe. You'll be voting on the 2021 valve replacement program. Bits were very close on that. I believe they were about $1,500 apart. And in your contract, which I'm, I'm sure none of you have read cover to cover because I haven't read a cover to cover, is the provision under there for local businesses. In your contracts, it's in there, if you want to read it word for word, I have it, I can give it to you. But basically, if you're a business in the city of Alpine, we give you a 7% margin of error. And if you're in the Alpine County, it goes to 5%. This particular bid was $60,000 round figure. So if we are a Alpine County business, that would give us a 5% margin there. Now, we don't get that money, we have to match the low bid. So you probably all know that already, but the crowd went for it. In this case, my competitor, Elmer's Crane and Dozer, they use an address on, apologies, Hamilton Road for their quarry for their local exemption to this. However, that isn't exactly accurate. They have a quarry there that they don't own, that they rent to themselves, I'm sure, through the corporate mumbo jumbo. But if you even go on their website and you look up that quarry address, there's no mail allowed to be delivered there. So they like to put that out there as, hey, we're a local business, we're going to support the community and stuff, and but there's no business there, just an address. It's no different than me renting an empty lot in the city limits and saying, well, that's, that's the address, even though I don't have a mailbox there and don't do any business there. So I want to bring that to your attention. And along with that, think moreover than where you pay your property taxes, the overall goal of that is where do you spend your money? You spend your money in Alpine or out of it. And everybody knows that Elmer's Corporation is based out of Traverse City, the big money of Michigan. Well, part of that is because we send the city's money that way when they do get a contract. So when they go to buy vehicles, I'm sure they come out of Traverse City or, you know, people that they support in their local hometown. When I, just recently, I started a pickup shop, which is a challenge right now. But I went to three dealerships in town and got prices from all three. The last pickup I bought came from, then that was under Bay Price or Jeep Dodge. So we do try to spend our money locally. I'd ask that you consider us for that project. We'd be happy to match the number for the $1,100 as the local business view for the project. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you. I'm discussing that further.
During the.
During the.
Yeah.
We should address, I suppose. But we can wait until that comes up on the agenda.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Oh, thank you. We're done with our live, our guests. Really, anyone in the virtual world like to address council? Thank you, sir. Bill Piper, you're going to be okay with just addressing that if necessary?
On the bid?
On the bid. All right, thank you. No public hearing this evening, so we have a consent agenda. A bill's to be allowed in the amount of $382,000, I'm sorry, $382,220.7 cents. B is a multiple budget amendment request to move budget. And it's the result of the chart of accounts conversion. And C is the approval of a noise variance on August 28, 2021, from 10:00 p.m. to 12:00 a.m. for Joe's Bar located at 1300 Ford Avenue. D is an application for the USDA Rural Development Grant. And E is the approval of a customer appreciation and family fun day for RE/MAX New Horizons on September 26, 2021 at the Michigan Q's Warming Show. The move we approved, the consent agenda as presented.
Mayor Porton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora? Councilwoman?
Yes.
Thank you. Up next is an announcement from the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks. I received a letter from that organization just late last week. And I wasn't aware that this had happened. Of course, Hannah did, but I wasn't certainly aware that she has studied and become incredibly proficient and in the clerk treasurer position, for sure. So I'll just read the letter. It's relatively short. Dear Mayor Walagora, the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks is an organization that promotes and educates Michigan's clerks through the, through our Michigan Professional Municipal Clerk Certification Program. Clerks are recognized for their knowledge of the multifaceted clerk profession. We are pleased to announce that your clerk treasurer finance director, Anna Soik, has met the program criteria and has attained the prestigious MI PMC certification, and his commitment to education and desire to attain certification clearly defines commitment to the clerk profession in your community. On behalf of the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks Board of Directors, I ask that you join us and congratulations, congratulating Anna Soik for her accomplishment and a well-deserved recognition. So we certainly want to recognize Anna. With that, they said no.
Thank you.
I guess she has a certificate that we could photograph over later.
Okay.
I do, thank you very much. It's been a lot of work. It's been three years. Each, one week each year, I go to Mount Pleasant for training, and it's very intense. And it's really, it's all things clerking from elections and budgets to parliamentary procedure and record-keeping. So a little bit of everything, and I think it's really helped me become successful in this position.
Awesome. And it's certainly helped us as well.
And if you've received an email, you've seen my name initials.
She's sending them.
All right, congratulations as well. All right, up next is the report of officers. First up is Rachel Smolinski, city manager with the 2021 Goose Hunt.
Well, thank you and congrats. Very proud of you, as always. Okay, so throughout the year, it is common to see Canada geese in and around the parks and various other areas of the city. These geese thrive in urban areas in large part because of the landscapes brought about by human development. Their presence in some locations may result in conflicts in some, with some area residents and uses. It is common for city staff to receive complaints about goose droppings in certain areas, especially during the summer months, and excessive droppings may lead to health problems for humans and animals. While it's certainly not our intent to eliminate the Canada goose population, it is important for us to manage the population to limit issues and conflicts within the city. When determining goose management methods for an area, we must consider several things, including the size and area, or excuse me, the size of the area and the feasibility of our chosen control methods. Although harassment techniques such as decoys, cracker shells, dogs, repellents, and exclusion techniques such as fences and vegetative barriers may be used in select areas. They must be used consistently in order to be successful. And they're not always feasible given limited resources. According to the Michigan DNR, when attempting to manage a large area, general hunting is one of the recommendations for management. Over the past four years, a goose hunt has taken place in the city at the fairgrounds adjacent to the wildlife sanctuary and at Michigan Q's Beach as part of our efforts to control the goose population in and around the city of Alpine. I believe that the hunt also took place sporadically in previous years. I believe that the hunt also took place sporadically in previous years. But it has just, it has been four years in recent history. Last year, the hunt removed a total of 125 geese. As another control measure, the city's Department of Public Works is permitted through the USDA Apes Wildlife Services Program to collect Canada goose eggs within the wildlife sanctuary each spring. This year, the DPW collected 48 eggs from 12 nests, which is about half of the eggs they normally collect. According to the attached memo from Don Gilmet, and Don is out in the audience to answer any questions, he conducted a survey on July 30 of this year of Canada geese in the parks and beach areas around the city and counted approximately 165 geese, which is still high but down from the estimate of 200 to 250 last year. As fall approaches, they will be joined by early migrating geese from the surrounding area. And the success in reducing our local goose population lies in the reduction of the local nesting goose population. It is my belief that the city should continue to implement this multifaceted approach to management of the Canada goose population, but also to research and implement harassment and exclusion techniques wherever feasible within the city. I've included a USDA fact sheet on preventing and managing waterfowl damage for your reference, but more information may be found at the link below. In addition, I've spoken with representatives from the Alpine Wildlife Sanctuary Board, and they support the city's Canada goose management strategy, excuse me, strategy, including collection of eggs and the annual hunt. It is my recommendation as city manager that the Alpine Municipal Council approve the 2021 goose hunt for the dates of September 9, 16, and the 23rd.
It kind of covers this several times, I suppose, in all of our, I'm sitting here. So I really, I don't have any questions if anybody does.
Well, I, 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 I'm, I mean, one of those people, I understand the issue with the goose. I get it. But I also have an issue with the goose. Over the last four years, Johnson and Rachel hasn't been here all of that time. But every year, we say we're going to look at other methods. We're going to see if there's other things that we can do to try to mitigate some of the issues. And I know that when we cut back the riverbanks, they come on bond shore because they only come up because they can see it's safe. So we do some things that invite them. I think we have to look at, and I asked this year specifically, that we form a group that we work on this project throughout the year and try to come up with other things and see if they work. And if it's plantings, if it's, you know. And I know this was a comment down at the boat harbor, one of the biggest complaints is the goose droppings. I get it. There's, you know, we talked about maybe doing something like having people, you know, walk their dogs down there every day, you know, if there's activity, they won't come. They just simply won't come. We don't want to wash the poo into the water, we don't want to do that. I just think there's better ways to do this. If a goose hunt is necessary, then it's necessary. But I'm never going to vote for it as long as we're not trying other ways to mitigate this. And I know that Dan's here, and Dan said that they only got 45 eggs this summer. And I know it was an early season for geese, so they laid the eggs earlier than normal. But maybe there was only 45 eggs because the population is getting under control. And when the, and when the migrating geese come in, when they come in from other areas, we don't want to kill those geese. We want them to go away. We want them to fly and do what they do. It's the local geese that become an issue. But they're just kind of part of who we are, the geese are. And they're, and I know this because I drive everywhere, and they pop up in different places every year. And this year, there's a lot on Johnson Street by the color company, the dam that, that's just, it's easy access. It's lots of good green grass and seeds and stuff for them to eat. So every year, they find a different place to come up that's easy. And sometimes we make it easy for them to come. But I also think we should look at a county-wide collection. Because some of these geese are coming to the city from outside of the city. So, you know, maybe we can work in conjunction with other entities to maybe do a collection. Those are my comments. So that'll be my comments every time. Anyway, do you want me to make the motion?
And I am willing to pull together to discuss this.
You know, the egg collection, the ones that they did get this year, only because I don't have to work for the city entirely. Not quite. I noticed those eggs that they collect, you know, and I know I've reported that you, I know you've been on council, but about how the geese go to St. James Bay when they destroy. Well, I found out this year, some of them don't. Just for your information. I mean, when you see these groups of geese that are all the same size in the middle of July, those are all the ones that didn't either mate or had their eggs. They don't, didn't, they just stayed. So they didn't raise any young here this year, but you know, of course, they're gonna try again next year. But the, it was a fluctuation in the weather, why the egg collection, according to Sean, I don't. I thought it meant.
Thanks, Doc.
Thank you.
Anybody else just in comment? I agree with Cindy as far as the other mitigation. It's just, we have talked about that since the first time the hunt was re-presented to us because it stopped for a period. And we talked about it, and I'm all for that, I have no issue with that. But in the meantime, I know that it hasn't happened quite as quickly as we expected. But, but if we stop again, in my opinion, if we stop the hunt again, allowing the hunt, then we're, our numbers are going to be back up to where they were prior to. And, and it's just, I don't want to share the city and the sidewalks and every open area of grass with, with a virtually unlimited amount of geese, which is what'll happen if we just don't do anything, you know. So I support the hunt. And I do want to just remind everybody, and perhaps, perhaps everybody knows, but just in case people don't know, this isn't, this isn't a goose hunt. Hunting geese is allowed everywhere under the same exact timeframe. We're just allowing three days of that same hunt that goes on everywhere in the county to occur in two, two locations in the city. So, so we're not actually approving a goose hunt other than, other than what the DNR also already allows. I just point that out because every once in a while, I get a comment to myself as if the city is holding a specific hunt on geese and we're not the hunters. That's really all I have for this time.
We're not exactly the sole municipality that runs through this. This is Sabley area, St. Ignis, Newbury Island area, all these places like this that are heavy with tourists like this and get constant complaints about the great places to go walking in the parks, everything else like this are spoiled by the crap in the grass like this. And so they all have the hunting season, what was on the golf courses or the football field or all these other places that the geese would congregate and stuff. I mean, if they come up with something with the type of dogs that they were talking about, like what Australian shepherds, or those things that like to chase birds and such like this, or other kittens, but that's not something, eventually they get used to the sound, or eventually they get used to the dogs or where else. So at least this being done provides some food towards the food bank as well. It's not killing all of them, I mean, it's not a wholesale slaughter, but it is a control method and such.
No, it's just Michael, that next term, we have, we add a layer to the conversation. It's done with something else.
I'll start this next month, starting to talk.
Well, and again, we can pull together a group. I have to think of a good name for it, a good acronym. And I know Shannon's talking seriously about video. Yeah, his name is first name. So all joking aside, though, you know, I think we can certainly pull together task forces of some type and talk about it early and have a plan for next year. Again, nothing's for sure, no promises, but we can at least look at alternative methods. Or, you know, again, that multifaceted approach includes more than just the hunt and the collection.
Yeah, I agree. You know, we talked about it several years ago, and I totally support a task group that could really look into this a little bit farther and look, and look at other methods as well. And did I understand you to say that you would actually vote for the hunt? We did all these other methods, and I'm not putting you on the spot. I'm just saying, we need to get to some of the other methods.
We need to try something.
So with that, Mr. Mayor, is there any other?
Yeah, I can just add that this is one pool or full box, adding more. So as I'm opposed to it, I mean, somebody work on it. And then outside, I'm reminded, we make, but it's just, it's always important to me that the meat goes somewhere, and I know that it does, so. Make some sausage, beef sausage.
I will approve the goose management, 99916, 923.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Waldeora? Councilwoman Hus?
Yes.
And Mayor Potem Johnson? Motion carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is first reading of ordinance 21-462, an amendment to the city of Alpine zoning ordinance, Article 2, 3, 5, and 7.
We brought this to council the last meeting. It's mine, or, this is a little longer than our normal ordinance amendment, but we wanted to get it out last time, so we gave it sufficient time to get ready. Did not intend to read all 24 pages. This is a specific request, but this is ordinance number 21-462. It is an ordinance to the city of Alpine zoning ordinance, Article 2. Instruction of language, Article 3. General ordinance, Article 5. District regulations, Article 7. Supplemental Development Regulations. And once again, I don't intend to read this unless you want me to. This will take effect after approval, if approved. This is not for approval tonight, it's just for a reading. It will come back at the September 7 meeting for the vote.
Expect a second reading of that. Next up, new business. First up is the Marina travel lift agreement. Shannon Smolinski, Harbor Master is here. Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. If I may, nope, you did not, sir. I would just like counsel to be aware, and I'd like to, before we proceed, that I would like to opt out of the discussion and or vote on this due to one of the principles is relative.
I think that's a basis for your repeat. I think counsel does need to vote on it, though.
Noah actually accused himself of the discussion.
Mayor Waldeora? Councilwoman Hus?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes. The floor is yours.
On September 1st, the city will assume operations of the city of Alpine with Marina. And then these services will include the use of the travel lift and winter storage for the boats that are on site. Previously discussed with the Harbor Advisory Committee and several of the seasonal voters, there's been some concerns over how this lift will be operated in the future. Most of these concerns also included board's comfort level with the existing head mechanics operating the lift as they have for the last 20 years. After approval from council, a contract was negotiated with Arnie Baker, Barker, and Reed Wilson of All Marine and Storage in the city of Alpine. All Marine will allow a seamless continuation of services for boarders to use that the boarders have used in the past and are comfortable with. City has negotiated the following compensation with All Marine. Normal lift services at $7 a foot. Emergency and after-hours lift services of $15 a foot. Mastumping fees of $175. And other services at a general service fee of $40 per hour. Contract will also allot workspace in the existing shop for All Marine to utilize for the first year of the contract, as well as broadside dockage of the pontoon in exchange for the city's continued use of the vessel. In addition, changes, with the changes of the operation, the city will be using, needing to update the fee schedule previously approved in the 2021-22 annual budget. Both fees are outlined, are in line with the voters already currently use, used to and are outlined in the attach. As therefore, my recommendation is the Harbor Master to execute a contract with All Marine and Storage for service lift operation and winter storage services as outlined. And I further move that we, the council approve the attached fee schedule for Marina operations.
And as you mentioned, these are, these are, a voter wouldn't notice any fee difference.
These are, we try to keep them identical to what they were used to seeing already with underbay shores, marine. We didn't increase them or anything like that. We tried to keep everything constant and the same.
I had a quick question, and really, it just kind of pertains to the contract. And it was, it was really more or less, it's really nothing against All Marine or these, or these two people. It was more of a checks and balances type of thing where the, where the, and it, what did it have to do with emergency after-hours lift services? So, so the, and I get it, there's going to be emergencies, and somebody's going to call, and they're going to call one of these gentlemen.
They're actually going to call me.
They're going to call you?
Yes.
Okay, because it seemed as though, maybe I read it wrong, but it seems, it seemed as though because of how the split is different, if it's normal working hours with, between the city and the, and All Marine, it's different depending on whether it's during working hours and during, during emergency, an emergency or something. So you'll kind of facilitate that in a, in a sense.
Correct.
Because I just, like I said, I would rather get ahead of that than, than have an issue later with something that may or may not have been perceived as an emergency. And it's really kind of a protection of both, maybe even more so All Marine than us.
Right, I'll be receiving the phone calls and the joint decision will be between us and All Marine, whether or not it's actually an emergency. If the boat isn't actively sinking and can make it till morning, we'll probably wait till nine o'clock and lift it at the ready. Otherwise, if it's, if it's going down and it needs to get out of the water, that's an emergency. So we'll have to pee, you know, the guys will have to get up in the middle of the night, come down and lift the boat out of the water to prevent an issue, so.
Okay, so it's more of a joint, but the call will come to you?
The call will come to me first, I'll contact them.
Excellent. I had no other question. I looked at you. Sorry. I don't know, anybody else has a question?
And I did, too.
Okay.
And I talked to Rachel about some of this this morning, and it's more about clarification in this contract. So the lift fees are $10 per foot, and it says that the contractor gets seven per foot. I would just like it, and I mean, if you do math, we get three, but I would just like it to state that. So that there's, there's just no question about that. And then the general labor fee of $40. What, what would they be doing? What is a list of things that they would be doing?
It's pretty much a coverall for us. We have never ran the Marina to the best of my knowledge. In the 80s, it was ran by another company, but more underbay shores 30 years ago. We don't have all the knowledge that we need. The one that comes to mind is there's a pump out there that cleans up the heads of boats. We're not real familiar with it. That $40 is there for us to have them available to, you know, train us how to use it, train us how to winterize it, things like that. That forty dollars is there for us to have them available to either train us how to use it, train us how to winterize it, things like that. Any kind of maintenance that the garage, the DPW garage can't do on the lift, they are willing to do as part of, you know, as part of that at their normal rate of forty dollars per hour. So those are the things. It's really nothing as far as working on a boat for somebody or anything like that. It's more a rate there, so it's established between us already for them to help us as far as like operational things that need happening.
And I guess just, just for me, because we're entering into a contract with them. I would like to see, what is a list of things that DPW will be doing? Because I haven't seen one. And like, what is a list that is beyond what we can do?
Okay.
And kind of just define that list that we would be paying forty dollars an hour for.
Okay.
I don't, I mean, outside of that, I don't, it's just kind of vague. They could say, you know, we swept the sidewalk, and here's my, took me two hours. Because it doesn't say that they can't charge us for sweeping the sidewalk.
Right, but you know, and that's like, yeah, I can help you. If you want, we can walk through that list together.
I don't think you're gonna, I guess just on that topic, you're not going to literally list everything.
No, but just kind of, what, what is DPW? So we hired two people from DPW to work down at the Marina. What is their job compared to what we need from, from Allmarine? What's their expertise that we can't possibly do? Where, where, where's the division? And maybe they'll teach us to do those things. But, you know, when you think about paying somebody forty dollars an hour, it's just me, that's a lot of money.
Yeah.
So what do we pay?
Right, and that forty dollars is ultimately for them to train themselves out of a job. Is ultimately what it's probably going to be, is them training themselves out of a job as far as us being able to take over the winterization of the, the pump out. Or being able to fix something that's wrong with the fuel pumps or those kind of things that we're just unfamiliar with yet. Just because we have never ran a Marina, my guys haven't learned that yet. And not depending on a sixteen to eighteen-year-old kid, how their, as a doc can't teach us those things. We have somebody with twenty-six experience teaching us. So ultimately, that's the goal with that forty dollars is for them to basically work themselves out of not having to do that.
And I, and I don't disagree.
I think we can come up with some general language in there to add. For that.
Okay. I talked with Rachel. This is the first full paragraph on page three. It says, "The City of Alpena shall collect all fees associated with hull load, storage, and launch. Payments for services rendered shall be paid at a minimum of monthly to contractor for services provided." It's kind of a clunky sentence. And then I got clarification when I asked about the services that Allmarine will charge the boaters. So this morning, it was my understanding that everything comes to the city and then we pay them at the end of the month, even for the things that they're doing for the other boaters, but that's not true. That money stays with them. Okay. And should that be clarified in this?
Yeah, I believe Shannon should have some draft language. I do. "The City of Alpena shall bill and collect all fees associated with hull load, storage, and launch. The city clerk's office payment for all work performed on behalf of the city shall be billed and revenue collected by the City of Alpena by the clerk's office. Payment for contractual services rendered by the contractor shall be paid at a minimum monthly for the work completed by the contractor. Contractor shall provide an itemized list to the Harbor Master weekly of work completed, including the final relative measurements of the boats, so fees and payments can be established."
Okay, thank you. And it's my understanding, I just want to get this off to clear, it's my understanding that the city will collect all of the fees from the daily boat launches.
Yeah.
We don't split that with anyone anymore.
Not, not as of September.
Right. And I just want to commend you for the contractor having to recycle the shrimp brand. And that's easy. They just have to get the bags.
Yes, we just have to purchase the.
But outside of, outside of those things, oh, there's one other thing. And it's not a hill I'm going to die on, except that the length of this contract goes through thirty, thirty if we, if we annually renew it.
Correct.
But most of our contracts, we only go three years out before we put it back out for bid. Not that, there's probably not many people that can do this, but three years is usually the standard.
Right, and the contracts that come to mind that we do extend those on are like pavement markings where it is very specialized. The electrical contract, which is very specialized, water and sewer, which is very specialized. This is kind of really a specialized thing.
And it is.
So we extended it that far.
And I don't disagree. And, and, and we have to annually approve it anyway, so, but I, I just wanted to point that out. Usually go through this goes. But those are my suggestions. Also, I think at some point, they should get a point of sale out there so that everything gets, if it's credit card, if it's check, if it's cash, it's all run right at that point. Would make it easier for the city. It's just my suggestion.
Okay. That's it.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Guys, I could, I think we probably, I offset the average when it comes to forty dollars an hour for general labor fee. You were like, it seems excessive, and to me, it sounds like a huge bargain because I'm not doing anything that's specialized to me that only I know or less than forty bucks an hour, so. I, I think it's a, I think it's, it's probably a pretty fair amount.
Maybe. Is that services at that general fee, labor fee would only be at upon request. So they're not doing, these aren't things they're going to do just on their own and bill for them later. It's going to be, you've requested them to provide these services. So really is on, is set up, I believe, to be on request, not something that they're just going to jump in and do something and then try to charge us later for it. So that's how it's.
So even if there's an emergency and something is, they're going to ask you first?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine. That's, you know, most of it is going to be at my request. Like I said, it's going to be minor training things. Something that we haven't even thought of yet, and they're like, oh, yeah, this is how you do this, like things. So could we have, I found it three things that need to be modified. Unless there's anything else. The clarification under general conditions, a lift fee of seventy dollars per foot paid solely to Allmarine shall be established for operating a twice one-time call, and then you add in three dollars goes to the city. And then under general labor fee of forty dollars, there will be a clarification on a general list of services, including but not limited to. And then Shannon had put together some language to modify that first paragraph on page three. And I'm wondering from Bill, if that's something that we can still approve with those modifications?
If counsel is comfortable, yeah. If this is supposed to start first, so we will not have another meeting before this is supposed to go.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that as long as you expect that Allmarine won't have any issues with it.
We already cleared it with number and date.
Yeah, true. They're okay with what we suggested, like we were.
Okay. Very good. I'd rather approve it now and then sign with minimal changes because it really doesn't change too much.
Yeah, we won't sign it, so we'll change it.
But we can approve it with change.
So I move we approve the travel lift operator winter storage services with Allmarine with the three changes that we discovered.
Councilwoman Hus?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes.
And Mayor Waldorf. Motion carried.
Thank you. And Shannon's going to stay here for the Marine.
She's scheduled.
Oh, we got her. Just she's scheduled her.
And I'll move that we adopt a fee schedule as printed.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Waldorf? And Councilwoman Hus?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Well, we read that's a long statement. So next up is the Marina gas and fuel bid recommendations.
On August tenth, the city received an open bids for the purchase and delivery of recreation gas and diesel fuel for the city of Alpena Marina. These products will begin to be sold dockside by the city on September first as part of the Marina operations. Bids were sent to various firms and plan rooms with three bids received from local bidders. Results are below. Because of the continued fluctuating prices of recreation fuel and fuel, the suppliers requested to bid what their markup would be to the base product at the time of delivery. In addition, the prices were also requested for delivery that was below minimum after-hours Sundays or holidays. Blarney Castle was a low bid with a markup price of seventeen and a half cents per gallon delivered to the Marina. In addition, this price is below what we could purchase at the state purchasing program at twenty-one cents per gallon. There is no upcharge from this, these contractors for any of the special deliveries, and they are willing to hold this price for us through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Therefore, my recommendation is the Harbor Master to award the supply and delivery of recreation gas and diesel fuel to the city of Alpena Marina to Blarney Castle of Alpena for the markup price of seventeen and a half cents per gallon, plus the base delivery price at the time of delivery.
I move we award the bid for supply and delivery of red fuel and diesel to the city of Alpena Marina, Blarney Castle of Alpena for a markup of seventeen and a half cents plus base price at the time of delivery.
Councilwoman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Waldorf? Councilwoman Hus?
Yes.
And Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next is the twenty-twenty-one valve replacement bid recommendation. Schultz is not here.
What's doing? Yeah, Shannon. Engineering inspector is Shannon. Yes. Chain's office. On August tenth, the city received an open bid for the twenty-twenty-one valve replacement program. Every year, the city budget, budgets money in order to replace deficient valves or insert new valves into areas with large shutdowns. This year, the city is targeting eleven different valves to either isolate large shut-offs or and or install some newer valves in areas where we have broken valves. This year's project is going to focus on the intersection of Chisholm Street and Second Avenue in advance of M. Batz repaving of Chisholm Street next year. Due to the numerous bid businesses in the downtown district, several of them being restaurants, the decision was made to once again install these valves overnight in order to limit the impact the water shut off to our customers. Preliminary plan is for us to shut the intersection down beginning at six P. M., shutting the water off at nine o'clock, and having the valves reinstalled and ready to pave by seven o'clock the following morning. So we require a variance to the noise ordinance for us to complete this work during this time. Bids were sent to various websites, are put on city websites, sent to various plan rooms, and to some local firms with three bids received as below. Adequate funding in the amount of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars has been established for the replacement of the main valves in this year's budget to cover both the cost of the valves and the assorted materials required. Therefore, my recommendation on behalf of the city engineer that the valve project be awarded to Team Elmers for the bid price of sixty-one thousand one hundred and for you to grant the noise ordinance variance that we need to complete the work that we need.
Thank you, Shannon. Just really quick on the noise ordinance. Was there a date?
There's not a date yet. After Labor Day. We're going to try to focus sometime between Monday and Thursday because of the later nights typically on the weekends for restaurants and stuff like that. So we're going to try to focus on a Monday through Thursday type date. Try to not hit a date that the restaurants have something going on. So it's kind of a balancing act with when the contractor's available and when we're not going to influence the businesses.
Okay, so you're just, it's sort of, so it's like an open noise variance?
It will be for the night of that construction.
But no, I mean, tonight, we would approve just an open.
If you could for us to do it that way.
So that's easy stuff.
Yeah, as long as there's sufficient orders to the folks downtown, once the date is established, then why not just, you know. Today at five o'clock, we're going to do it tonight.
Typically, on these like this, we do try to give them at least a week.
Okay. Yeah, and I, I would, I would assume that just putting that, all of that together is, it's not something you'd be able to do with too much short notice as far as like a week.
Yeah, because these are, the contractor would have to actually get his crews ready to be working overnight. We need to get parts in, we need to get several contractors, and we typically try to watch the weather in advance to try not to be raining while we're doing it. Because it's so fun that you're already working overnight, you don't want it to rain on you too.
Okay.
So normally, the noise variance is from ten P. M. until twelve P. M. It's a little, need it longer than that? Yes. Unless things go really, really, really well. Yes.
We'll just open it right up.
We would go tell somebody seven A. M. Just because if we can get the fever in there at six, we're going to try to. So that we can get that intersection back open before traffic starts at seven o'clock next morning.
No problem. I do want to address the, the intent of the local bidders. And where, in your opinion, what Mr. McCarthy addressed before this.
Well, the local bidder's preference gives the local company the right to match the bid if they're within those limits. Now, I, I mean, I know the the bid package here in terms of the information getting to counsel and myself. This Team Elmers, no, this is McCarthy Construction. I would not be able to express any opinion about what the Team Elmers actually operates out of Hillman. But they've got a business address of seven oh forty's Progress Home Machine. And I think just based on previous bids they've submitted, that they at least held themselves out to be a pretty good business out of Hillman. But wouldn't be able to say that without tracking the seven oh forty's progress through. So under that scenario, if McCarthy Construction and Team Elmers are going to Hillman, then that local bidder's preference is going to be a advantage to the one. I think what, what Adrian is saying, he feels like they don't really operate at Alpena County. That's, that's their.
May I clarify? It's Alpena County. So my mailing address is Hillman, but I mean, Alpena County. Their Progress Street, which is their business, no, no doubt about it, is outside of Alpena County. And, but instead, they use the address of Hamilton Road for when they submit the bids. And then maybe they didn't on this bid, in which case they're, then they're outside of Alpena County. And it, end of the day, it's, you can reject any bid for any, any reason, but that's, that is the lay of the land as far as where they do this.
And so we don't, I mean, when it, when it comes to the, when it comes to the actual language, we're, what, what are we, what are we obligated to, to, to use? That their, their company, their company's office address?
They have to be doing business regularly in the county or in the city.
Not doing, well, not doing business regularly here because someone from Lansing is coming to business regularly here. They have to have a permanent address. Their office has to be located here.
They have a business establishment.
Okay, and that's what you meant.
When I said regularly doing business, I mean, there's something not, I think what Adrian was suggesting is you can't just get a P.O. box in Alpena, Michigan, have your mail delivered to the post office and say, my business is there. They're not, they're not regularly doing business in Alpena under that scenario.
Right.
And like I said, I don't know where Team Elmers operates out of. I would think that Steve would probably have a better handle on that engineering. And I don't know where the bid came from. I know the paperwork's at Hillman, but did they submit it from Hamilton Road or not?
I believe they did submit it from Hamilton Road.
I'm curious, I looked up their website, they have 17 addresses listed, every other one has mail delivery except the Hamilton Road address, which is a quarry. So there are 17 locations listed.
Well, they're a big corporation.
Right.
Their local office, their local office is exactly where Adrian said it was, you know that.
Yeah, it's, it's Hillman.
It's in Hillman.
It's in Hillman across from that elementary school.
Yeah. So, and I certainly, I guess, I wouldn't suggest that we would use their Hamilton Road address under any circumstance for local bidder because it's a quarry, and there's no office there that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I know there, you know, what Steve's got here, he's got, he's got the bid list of 704 East Progress Street. So, okay, if that's in Mount Huron County, Immigrant Affairs Construction, in Alpena County, there's Perfect Construction. They'll be able to take advantage of the, of the local bidder preference, and they'll be able to match, or give them, given the right to match that whole bid.
Would you, do, would you want some more time to, does this have to be awarded tonight? I mean, because I want to make sure that we got this in the intent of what the local bidder's preference is.
Be awarded tonight. I'd rather go back to Steve and.
I'd like to make sure that Steve's, Steve's involved in it. Because he's the one.
I can't see a reason why we couldn't order it at the first meeting in September if you wanted.
Okay. I'd be more comfortable with that, especially since, under the circumstances, and of course with Steve not being. If you're going to be able to.
And I was just suggesting that maybe we need to clarify in our local bidder's preference that it has to be their business address. Does it say that in, in a local business preference? Does it say their business address?
I don't.
We use their business.
I don't have the council policy statement.
I have it right here, yeah.
So I wouldn't.
Page 11, P. 124. Thank you.
Constitute a local bidder's preference, the local bidder vendor shall have to meet the following qualifications for this one year prior to the bid date when the proposal's issued. Shall have a legal and permanent business address within Alpena County. Shall have personal property and real property taxes in Alpena County. Shall be in compliance with all city ordinances and codes. Shall not be indebted or in default to the city.
And that says they have to have all of those, it doesn't say or, or, or.
Yeah, there's not or, it says has to have these.
And I think it sounds like it's covered.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Okay.
Okay. If you, yeah, if you'll, so we postpone.
Postpone, yes.
Your clients have figured this out. Paperwork, you got the. I can't say paper anymore, I have to say postpone. The local postponed that decision until the engineering department has sufficient time to, to go over that local bidder's preference and reconsider if necessary.
So we'll call it to the next meeting then?
So.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Walagora?
Bye.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Potom Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, last thing on our agenda this evening is the unfortunate resignation of council member Amber Hess. Would you like me to read the letter? She sent me a really great resignation letter. I guess I would, in order to put it into, into the only minutes left for it to be required to read this. So it was addressed to me, but to all council. Good evening, ma'am, it's an honor, it had, it is an honor and a privilege to serve on the city of Alpena Council. I have truly appreciated your leadership as mayor and the willingness of all council members to work together respectfully as we represent the citizens of Alpena. I have served as a councilwoman for over three and a half years now and truly have enjoyed representing the citizens of Alpena. I had intended to run for another term this year, but recently have decided that, that I moved to the country is the right choice for me at this time. I will still be in Alpena County once I move, but will no longer within the city of Alpena limits. Therefore, I will be resigning from city council due to no longer being eligible based on residency requirements. I am respectfully requesting that you and council accept my resignation from council effective Friday, August 20, 2021. It has truly been a pleasure working with you and others on council over the years. I wish the best to you and other council members and the entire community as always, always. Alpena is my home, and even though my address will change a little, I shall always consider myself to be Alpena Amber. And please know that I claimed that name before Austin Brothers named their beer. So a plug for a local brewer. And sincerely regret having to see you go under the circumstances.
I'm enjoying you so much and appreciate the respectfulness and knowing we've all worked together. This is not a change, I love, it's the Alpena, it's my home, and it's going to be, just decided to stretch my wings and have some land and a little machine. So I'm looking forward to the move, that says bittersweet.
Yes, you've truly done amazing job. Even though we've had some great debates, and I've enjoyed every moment of it, I mean, we have a lot of respect for everything that you've done for the community and for the council.
I appreciate you sticking with the whole closed session again.
She's going to be a donor now too. So.
I have to repeat myself, I imagine from pony.
No, I don't know.
She should make a motion there.
Okay, well, that's fine, it's okay.
The conflict, the financial conflict, the interest is a little bit opposite what normally would be. You're going to be off your salary for the rest of the year. Just really quick, I guess, an explanation, I think we were going to do a quick explanation, I can do that? Or did you, were you prepared to, please?
I can say, so as far as the process of moving forward, I plan to prepare a press release and get a little point information. And Bill, please fill in.
Remember, Nina. Okay, so I'm going to prepare a press release here in the next couple of days, and there will be just a simple application, and there will be a link on our website, or it can be picked up at the clerk's office. It's not yet ready, but in the next couple of days, we'll have it out there. Just for your information, the candidates must meet the following qualifications for consideration. Must be 18 years or older, must be a U.S. citizen, may not be in default to the city, school, district, county, or other municipal corporation, must be registered to vote within the city, and must be a resident of the city for at least one year. And for the city charter, of course, council members are elected at large, so there are no precincts. So that's all I have as far as that, Bill, did you have anything to add?
Well, just one of the things charter requires that council fill the seat within 30 days of the effective date of the acceptance of the resignation. So her resignation is effective this Friday, the 20th. The council will have 30 days from that to fill it. So obviously, accepting applications in the whole 30 days. So I think the press release should reflect that. And that, and we, and we should conduct those in the usual open meeting. So based on the number of interviews, there might need to be a special meeting. If 20 people fill their ad and ratings, if you're, you know, are just a couple, then maybe it can be conducted during a regular council meeting.
May I ask a question? So if two people apply, we interview both, if 20 people apply, we interview 20?
Well, I think we do, our council does have discretion to look at those and decide that maybe only a certain number of those should be interviewed. Uh, when the interviews are conducted though, the council should, you know, have a set of questions to ask all the candidates. So it shouldn't be at a different level in that regard, that shouldn't allow some, some candidates to answer some questions and others to not answer those. But I think you would have discretion if it were 20 candidates to say, we're not going to interview 20, we're going to, you know, five, let's say, or whatever it feels is spoken about.
So our. Yes, and doing the math, I don't count days or anything, but it's going to come pretty close to being before. It would, it's going to, the decision has to be made before our second meeting in September. I don't know whether it would be feasible to get everything together for our first meeting in September. I would anticipate having a special meeting just to take care of this, and that would be the only thing on the agenda. Because I think it would just be way too cumbersome and lengthy. So let's plan on a special meeting and we'll, we'll put a date together, we'll work, we'll work together and get a date.
And then as far as leaving it, you know, once we get the press release, leaving it open, I would think at least 10 days we can have it, maybe as much as 14 days if we do have that second meeting, or if we're just scheduling a special meeting. I think we could set it in, and that, just to leave it open for a little while.
We'll just, council will be aware of that, have a scheduled location in September, not a meeting week, but that's good, so. Work that, that would be great.
You should call him.
I know. You gotta decide. Well, and then I'll let the city attorney just go sit there in my back.
We'll be up to council to come up with the questions they will ask.
I can certainly pull a draft together, but I'm open to suggested questions.
Starting point. Yeah, and then if somebody's got a, if somebody's got a question that's on their mind, let's shoot off some emails to Rachel, she can put it together. Just for clarification, that, that person will sit on city council from the date that we assign them, assign them?
Appoint.
Appoint them until the first meeting in January. Regardless of the, of the election.
Right.
Yeah, so with that said, we have, did someone move or?
I move that we accept Councilwoman Hess's resignation on the 20th of August.
Rapidly, I have a second.
Mayor Walagora?
Bye.
Councilwoman Hess? Mayor Potom Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
And Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Motion clear.
I move adjourned. I didn't know that, I had to do the last.
I couldn't have did it. She should have done it the last time.
That's right, that was, that's my bad. I was saying, I was laughing, I had one, I was just like, yeah, it's like, you know, never.